Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the April 9, 2008 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Let the record show that all are present except Ms. Paige Becknell. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion or any additions, amendments to the agenda.
I'd like to add an item under Old Business, dealing with the parish master plan.
All right, we'll make that item C. All right.
Is there an emergency to do that?
I doubt it.
It needs to be an emergency.
I would bring it up under New Business, O'Neill, but we've already discussed it last year, and I wanted to get an update as far as the proceedings thus far.
Well, it's not on the agenda, and what's the emergency?
I didn't say there was an emergency, but at the same time, I'd like to go ahead and bring it up. I'm not saying the commission's going to take any action on it, but I think it's something that was already discussed in this meeting. It's not an item of new business.
All right, do I have a motion to amend the agenda, to add that item?
What was the item again? Can you?
Deals with the parish master plan.
Motion to add it.
Okay, now, second, of course, I guess. You can second.
Second.
Second. Any opposition? All right, agenda amended. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda's adopted. Acceptance of the minutes from the March 12 Planning Meeting. Any revisions, amendments?
Motion to approve, as written.
Second.
Any opposition? Minutes passed, March 12, 2008 meeting. Acceptance of the minutes from the January 9 Joint Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any opposition? Minutes are approved. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for any public comment from any member of the audience that addresses any item not on the agenda. And just kind of let everybody know, we will have a zoning meeting right following this meeting, so if you're here for the zoning, just sometimes people get here early to catch both of them, and it's a... It follows the planning meeting. Laverne. Okay? And you want to... If you wouldn't mind, Ricky, introduce yourself, let everybody know who you are, and welcome aboard.
Thanks. My name is Ricky Compton. I'm the new Planning and Development Director, and I'm an LSU alum, and I've been working in Florida for about 11 and 1/2 years, and I got the opportunity to come home and bring my family home and help Ascension become a better place, and I look forward to working with all of you.
And same goes here. Welcome aboard, and looking forward to working with you. Okay, if nobody else has anything to comment on other than item on the agenda, I'd like to open up for pub... Well, let's go to approval of the following family partitions. The Sheila Burke property tracks M3A, M3B. Have a representative for the family, please.
James Faug, representing Ms. Burke, on the following family partition. Comments were made, they were addressed and changed on the plaque, asking the commission for approval.
Any comments from commissioners?
Just out of curiosity, I see that there's a M3 and an M4 and an M6. I'm assuming there's an M1 and an M2 and an M7. Is there an M8?
Not that I'm aware of. All of this was family property, Mazok property, and I think it was divided up among the heirs of the property, I would say, like five, six years ago, and she's taken her part in dividing it up between her two sons so they can move on the property immediately.
I'd like to point out that because there is a 20-foot private servitude passage, there can be no further development on lot M3B.
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to point it out.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this particular family partition, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, as I believe it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Sherri Slimon, second by Don Grant. Any opposition? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for the Peter... If you might help me with his pronunciation, Leota property. Lots C1, C2, D1, and D2.
My name is Scott Lobel. I'm with Lobel Engineering and Land Surveying. I represent Mr. Peter Leota and the subdivision of this family partition, and we would like to request your approval, and any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
Scott, I have a question. We went out and drove out and looked at this. When you get to the end of the asphalt, it's the property on the left. Okay, we couldn't find any surveying flags, we couldn't find anything that showed us which property it actually was, and then you probably noticed they're knocking down trees on the right side if you go down that little existing road, so we just wanted to make sure we knew which property it was.
The clear-cut property is adjacent to him. The front corner right there is in the... pretty much in the right wheel path of the driveway whenever you get off the asphalt.
Okay.
It's about a foot, foot and a half off the asphalt, and we had a wooden stake there, but it was off to the side, and they usually don't stay whenever they're around driveways like that.
Okay, I had a... Where the road ties in to the corner on the property, we almost need a detail to see more clearly what's going on right there. What... Do they have the... I'm concerned they don't actually have the servitude there that they actually need.
That's something that we could put on the map, as far as if they have any legal servitude. We didn't find anything on any reference maps as far as on Stephen Toop's property, which is just a... Before you get to Mr. Leota's property, we could take a look at it. My opinion to what is out there on the ground is that the parish is maintaining up to its property, and he has been accessing his property, Mr. Leota has, for as long as he's been owning it, well over 10 years.
But, okay, but there's a fence on that corner, so how does he access that property?
The fence is, to my knowledge, is his... And his property, where the road is at, is also on his property too, and he just has that portion of fence.
That little gravel road is on his property?
The majority of it, yes.
Okay.
Right at the end, it is kind of winding out right there and going to the other lady, Ms. Yelverton's property. He's had some conversation with her. She wants him to be able to straighten out his driveway eventually, whenever he goes in and reconfigures his road to match what we have shown on the plaque.
Are you all going to do any improvement to that road, that gravel road, or they're just going to stay that way?
He's going to relocate the existing driveway that he has, and he does intend on constructing ditches on both sides of his new driveway to put it into the servitude on our plaque. We have the servitude going down the middle of his original tracks, track C and track D, but the way his driveway existing currently out there is completely on the right side of his property, but he's going to relocate it.
And it's... Our information says that he's not going to construct a hard-surface street. Do you know what he plans to do?
He has indicated to us he wants to give those parcels to his two sons.
But what about all the rest of that property?
He has a travel trailer back there, and he told us he was going to eventually build on it.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. On the road coming into it is a 40-foot right-of-way. It looks like the center line of the property is in the center line of that 40-foot right-of-way, so that will only give you 20 feet. How do you get onto the other pass... servitude?
That's kind of what I was asking, Mr. Don. It's really not clear. We kind of need a detail to show that, because if it is just 20 feet, 20 feet's not enough.
And we could revise our map to show a blow-up of that area to show exactly how much of his driveway is on his property, but as I said before, we noted a found half-inch iron pipe at the end of asphalt, and it's pretty much in the right wheel path because the driveway is widening, but as soon as you get 100 feet from the end of the asphalt, his driveway, in our opinion, is completely on his property.
It's really confusing, though, when you go out there and look at it. We've given our opinion of it all. It just doesn't seem like it's on the map.
I've got to be honest with you. Part of the problem is that the graphic representation of your preliminary drawing here, it literally shows, you know, Halton... The center line of Halton Road being your east property line, which means that you only have 20 foot of that right-of-way to use for access, and that's what you're representing here. You know, what's physically out there either needs to be accurately represented here, or maybe what's physically out there is just not... It's not what's on this map.
From the little bit of research that we have done in looking at the road of Halton Road, it appears to us that Halton Road, the right-of-way or access given to the parish, it looks like adjacent property owners off their property line has given that. This property owner allowed 20 foot, and this property owner allowed 20 foot, and that's why we're graphically showing Halton Road, but it ends at Mr. Leota's property, and that's why we show Halton Road, the center line of it, because his corner is lining up down the center line of that road as you look out back towards.
Okay, so what I just heard you say is that the graphic representation is accurate with respect to what's legally in the public record, notwithstanding any other physical access that's out there. So what I just heard you say?
I don't know as far as the part with legally in the public record, but I feel that we're accurate with our map based on that pipe falling out in the center line of Halton Road.
Okay. Unfortunately, what you're showing us is a 20-foot means of ingress and egress into this property. That's what this graphically represents. That's what we're having a problem with. If you're telling me that what's physically out there is different, then I suggest that maybe you represent that on the graphics somehow, and then we need to make sure that there's a legal right to cross over that property. However, that driveway is physically on site. It could be that it's prescriptive, but you know, it needs to be shown.
Okay, could we revise our request for approval contingent on that he can obtain servitude either from Mr. Toops or Ms. Yelverton to be able to make a 90 over onto his property and get in... Where he can get the full 50 foot servitude?
Well, we can... You haven't even opened it for public yet, but I mean, we can defer it, or you can pull it.
Let us get through to the public hearing, and we'll address that. What did I... You said something about moving the road to the center of the property. Is that... Whose property were you referring to? I missed the open comment. Were you going to... Is Mr. Loewy, is he going to move his to the center after Toops moves it to the center, or what did I understand there incorrectly, something?
Mr. Toop... Mr. Leota plans to, whenever he comes off of Halton Road, to jog the road over completely to within the 50-foot servitude that we have shown.
Right.
If I'm understanding your question. What I talked about earlier as far as the property owners of... Before you get to his property is, it appears that they gave each side of their common property line to make the 40-foot right-of-way for Halton Road.
Right, I understand. I thought I heard you say about bisecting the property, whether Mr. Toops was going to do it after we read, subdivided this, or not. Maybe, like I said, the opening part of your statement I missed, and I wasn't clear on what you were referring to. Okay.
Let me ask another question. How does Ms. Rhonda Yelberton get to her parcel land?
Off of her 20-foot of Halton Road.
So you're telling me the Halton Road continues on?
A gravel driveway continues. I think the parish right-of-way stops at the asphalt.
Is there a 40-foot right-of-way that continues on beyond where you show it?
Not to my knowledge.
But there is a gravel drive.
There is something.
Yeah, there's something there.
I guess what I'm saying, just how Mr. Leota has only the 20-foot ingress and egress to his property, she has the same.
So, O'Neill, if the parish maintains it, what's our meaning?
It's tacitly dedicated if they've maintained it for the requisite period of time.
And there's nobody here that can address that?
Well, but they haven't... They have not maintained it past the asphalt, right? So it ends at his property.
But he's claiming that they do maintain it.
There is a gravel.
Oh, they don't maintain it, okay.
All right, this time, I'd like to open up the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, make a comment on this property? You have three minutes. Nobody wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any additional comments, discussion?
Go ahead.
Unless the applicant would like to go ahead and request it to be pulled, I say we defer it for 30 days and give them the opportunity to clear up some of these issues, come back with more information to give us a clearer idea of what's taking place.
I'll second that. They'll give you an opportunity to work with the parish and try to resolve it.
I wanted to ask Mr. Leota if that's what his wish is all.
Yeah, that's fine, but I don't know what I'm hearing over here. The property is lined where my line is, and if y'all went back there, my gates are 100 foot back, so that gravel road is lined. That's not... Then Rhonda's road, she kind of... Well, she had... You know, hers was there, mine was there, and the blacktop kind of turned towards her a little bit, and you know. The driveway is my property by the blacktop. It's not. Nobody else is. There's no way to stop it.
Understood, but I think what we see here is different, and I think we just need to get that clarified.
Okay, well, I agree with you. I don't have no problem with that. And, you know, I don't... I mean, when I told Rhonda, I had took some of our fence up, because she had some horses over there, and I'm taking some of mine down because of the property line between me and her, and she wanted to know why I put the fence there, because I was supposed to be over about eight to 10 feet by the ditch. That's what I wanted to start with. I don't know how that runs, but that's the old Moore property, and when I had it re-surveyed, I did come up short about four foot, you know, but I came to go with a change. All right, so that's just... I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I got a motion to defer Michael Marsh on, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Okay, this time, I'd like to open up discussion on the Renee Williams property, tracks D2A through D2D.
We represent Mr. and Ms. Renee Williams on this property. It's an eight-acre tract that she wants to divide to be able to give to her children and also keep a piece for her. As we got into the survey, we realized that there's 20-foot servitude passage to get to her property. She has adequate property to give to her children, but the way it's configured, it doesn't front on existing parish road to be able to allow her to divide it to give to her children. So with that being said, we'd like to request approval of her family partition, and we'll try to answer any questions you guys may have.
There was a staff comment here about including a signature block for the owner of lot 2A. It says consultant has not provided. Has that been provided since?
Originally, we had a... We had sent the parish office a deed that we had in our file that showed where the gentleman had given the 20-foot servitude, and we had hoped that that had handled us putting that block on the map, because it was previously dedicated.
That's just 20 feet, right?
Just 20 feet.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wanting to come forward and discuss this property, please come forward.
Hi, Renee Williams. She needs to sign in.
Okay, she signed in? Okay, yeah.
And I kind of wrote a little something.
Just speaking at the end of the mic, if you would. Here.
I was a single parent when I bought this land, and my intentions when I bought this land was for myself and my children to live on. Now my children's grown up, and, you know, we're trying to get all of us together, and I purchased this land in '95, and when I purchased it, the servitude was sufficient enough. There's a drainage ditch that's like 500 feet or more that runs along my property on the north side. To comply with the existing parish regulations, this would be... This would create an undue hardship for myself and my children. I know that they said I need a little extra footage, but I don't have anybody to give it to me.
Any questions, comments? All right, anyone else wishing to comment on this property? Yes, sir. Please sign in.
My name is Joel Moore. I own the property right next to the road. I haven't seen a copy of the map yet, but as I understand, they're requesting additional servitude along that 20-foot right-of-way. I was the one that gave the original right-of-way 20-foot access to the back. If additional right-of-way is granted, basically what it would affect is I have a sewage treatment plant on my existing land that's about 10 feet off of that existing road. On the other side of the property, there's a water well, I think it's about 10 or 12 feet off of that road, so additional right-of-way there would be really tough. In addition to that, I have some, you know, 100-year-old trees in the back corner of the property that I really don't want to take down. So I have no problems with them subdividing the property, just I don't want to give up any additional right-of-way.
We can't make you give up property. I mean, they have to come to you and ask you for it.
Okay. Like I said, I haven't seen a copy of the map, so... But as I understand, they are requesting additional right-of-way.
Yeah, and it would be on their property, not yours. I mean, the way the map is, it's all on her property.
Okay, so it's not on the entrance road itself?
But it is the actual access road, yeah, but it's...
They have 20 feet.
They have 20, and you have, I guess, 15?
They have a 20-foot driveway, and essentially, the code requires them to have a bigger one unless we grant them a variance.
Right.
And the variance has to be based on hardship, and so what you've provided is additional information to support their request for a variance.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, at this time...
It's not a variance you can grant, because the ordinance says shall.
That's not a variance we can grant. Who do they have to get it from? Do they have to go to the Board of Adjustment?
I don't know if that's a minimum, that's required with the code. It says shall, it doesn't say may.
Wait, the driveway may not be used to service additional lots, but to me, that's pretty specific.
Yeah, that is very specific. Okay.
No further driveway servitude shall be allowed. 20... An additional 20-foot private driveway, even if the existing track is subject to subcutting.
Okay, any other comments from the public? At this time, public hearing is closed.
So, O'Neill, here and now, where do they get the relief from that? If they... Is there a vehicle for relief?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think the only way they can get it is if Mr. Moore chooses to give it, and it sounds like he doesn't have it available.
Right. Or they get it from another location.
Do you want to see a copy of it? I mean, you're welcome to come up here.
Well, no, I just want to say, there is an additional road that goes to the back of her property. It's called Family Acres. It runs from Laurel Ridge Road all the way to the very back of her property, and it's actually owned by her family, so would it be possible for her to get right-of-way with that? And it wouldn't require any additional frontage from me, or... And it wouldn't require me to cut any trees if they want to bring a house in.
Yep. Well, and this map is really not clearly showing the extent of that road. We would need to have that information provided. I mean, we see Family Acres Road, but we have no width of that servitude and/or right-of-way available on this map, so...
And like I said, I have no problems with them subdividing the property. I just don't have the additional...
I understand. We appreciate it.
I have a question for you. On the actual subdivision, you show Family Acres Road along the southern property line, but on your vicinity map, you show it quite a distance away from it, so which is it? Is it... Does it abut, or does it not abut the land?
There is a limestone road that's right up next to our property line, and our vicinity map isn't accurate.
Is it existing? How wide a servitude is it?
I'm not sure.
It shows 15 foot inside her parcel, but you don't know if there's any to the south of it. I've got to tell you, based on legal interpretation, if you're relying on that existing 20-foot servitude, we have no way of approving that. The code doesn't allow us to... Doesn't provide us to get a... Granted, a variance will give you permission to do this, but if Family Acres Road is a viable alternative that you confront, that all four of these lots confront on, that may be your solution, and that may be where you want to do the research and see if that works.
Hello, my name is Cord Roberts. I'm her son. And from my understanding, it's a private road, and I'm not really sure how that works. I mean, since it's a road, but the fact that it's private, is there a way that you can make them give you access? Or how does that work?
Well, if this.
You can solve it with somebody.
You need to check with somebody on that. We can't answer that question.
Well, this may be another situation where we go ahead and defer. Give them a fair chance to give, come back in 30 days, let them find out more, get more information that they can provide to us, and we take it from there.
And Mr. Roberts, it does look like part of this road is on y'all's property. So I would think you should have some right to the road. I don't know if anyone accesses it, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Did you already make it?
I offer as a motion to defer for 30 days.
All right, we had a motion to defer for 30 days from Michael Marshawn, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I entertain the discussion on the A.C. Rodri Estates tracks G2A, G2B, and G2C.
We represent Clarence Clifton and Susan Clifton on the platted family partition. Friday, we had learned, this past Friday, we had learned that there were some questions from the Ascension Parish Health Unit. I spoke to Mr. Chuck Methaveen that Friday. We, and he had some questions and comments. I wanted to get back with the property owners to see exactly how the sewer effluent was flowing from the existing mobile home that was on track G2. And, you know, he wanted us to indicate some things on our plat of how the sewer effluent was reaching the nearest parish-maintained ditch or roadside ditch. He was out of the office, as my understanding. My secretary told me that he was in the office today and had called for me. We were out doing a survey. We would request approval based on that we can satisfy him with, and what he wants to see on the map as far as the sewer effluent goes.
Any comments, questions from the commissioners?
So you still have not had the opportunity to talk to him, though?
Monday and Tuesday, we didn't get to speak to him, and then I had a message that this afternoon he had called for me in preparation for a meeting. I didn't, him and I didn't have a chance to speak again.
On track G2A, there's a house office.
There is, there is an existing house.
And the 40-foot right-of-way of passage you are going to, that's proposed, is that right?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this property? You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions, additional comments?
What's going to happen with track G1?
G1 is currently owned by Mr. Rodri, which is Mr. Clifton's uncle. It's track A, track G1, track F, and everything south of this property where we show Evan Bell Sugar Corporation is cultivated field. And Mr. Rodri, other than the one acre that he originally gave to his nephew, Mr. Clifton, is leasing this property to sugarcane farmers.
Well, the way the driveway is set up, it can't go any farther. So it's not like they're going to be developing the whole sugarcane field.
Any other comments, questions? If not, what is the wish of the commission?
Staff, is clearance for that health something that they require before the plat? Or is it something that they require prior to building permit?
Do we suppose to get that before they bring it to the commission?
Yeah, but the question, the question the health unit is asking is to show how the effluent is getting to a public ditch. The question is, are you satisfied that they can do that prior to the plat being signed? You're satisfied with that? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion of approval, subject to the applicant adequately demonstrating to DQ that they have effluent discharged into a parish-owned ditch prior to the plat being signed by the chairman.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Ms. Barre. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing for granting final approval to Renaissance Second Filing. Mr. Tatum?
Ladies, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. I'm Tatum with Tatum Engineering, representing All-Star Builders Group. I'm here tonight asking for conditional approval of Renaissance Subdivision Second Filing. This will be lots 55 through 109. The construction is nearing completion. The asphalt went down this week. If you've been through the subdivision lately, you know the improvements out there include curbing gutter streets, subsurface drainage, we'll have underground utilities. We have stormwater management areas that are already in place that were built with the first filing. We have a community sewage collection system and treatment facility. As I'm aware of it today, the items that we have left to complete the job include street signage, final grading on the lots, and site cleanup. We've addressed all of the comments from the planning commission staff, with the exception of subdivision benchmarks, and that'll be taken care of shortly. And subject to the final inspection process and properly addressing any punch list items, we ask for your conditional approval tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Okay, hearing none at this time. I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and comment? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Comments, questions from commissioners?
Staff, you don't have any issues with the conditional approval? Okay.
We have a, we have a comment about the, let me find it, sorry. Yeah, is that what it is?
You're directed. I'll make a motion of approval, subject to the applicant completing all of the required improvements, passing inspections, and making the required adjustments to the plat for the benchmark prior to the plat being signed by the chairman.
Second. I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to open up the floor for final approval of Commerce Center First Filing.
My name is Eric Erickson with Evans Graves Engineers. Commerce Center is nearing the completion of construction. We do have a few punch list items consisting of some striping and some curbing around the entrance that we are currently underway on. But at this time, we'd like to request final plat approval.
I have a question. How are lots 3, 4, 5, 3, 4, and 5 accessed?
The total of 3, 4, and 5 will have one driveway on the airline.
One driveway on the airline?
Yes, ma'am.
Chris? Do you have anything to say, or any comment about that?
Well, the completion of that is subject to the improvements in the intersection. I think it's reasonable for them to have the final plat completed subject to the punch list items on the final inspection. And those three lots will just get their access when the intersection improvements are completed. I would recommend that lots 3 and 5 have a note on the plat that they do not have direct access to Airline Highway. Access would be granted to the servitude of passage on lot 4.
If I can comment on that, the actual one driveway splits lot 3 and 4. So we might have to reword that, but it is just one driveway.
And that's already existing where the trailer is, right? Where the office?
The driveway's not there yet.
Well, but there's a culvert and a little dirt drive. Is that it?
That's not it.
Oh, that's not it, okay.
It's not installed yet.
Okay.
But we can provide a note that says, you know, lots 3, 4, and 5 shall be granted one access point on the airline.
Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward to discuss this project? Please sign in. You'll have three minutes to talk.
Ray Smeeter, I think what I had is just more of a question for the developer. I think they just, I think the planning commission just approved a lot on airline in front of this subdivision. I could be wrong, but could we ask the developer about that? They cut out a lot in front of this piece of property, and maybe it's below this, I'm not sure.
All right, we'll address it. Just go through your comments, any ones you have, and we'll come back.
That's the only comment I had.
Okay.
It didn't show it, and I want to clarify it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, at this time, public hearing is closed. Okay, if you want to address his comment, please.
I believe lot 6 is currently resubbed as a separate lot, just to sell it. But with this final plat, it would be replatted as part of the subdivision. So it's basically lot 6, as it is shown on the final plat. And it will not have a driveway to airline.
Okay, that was going to be my next question.
It'll go towards Marketplace Drive.
Okay.
But shouldn't the plat show how the driveway for 3, 4, and 5 is going to be configured to Airline Highway? I mean, obviously, a portion of those lots are going to be taken up as part of our access easement.
Right, and access easement is shown. If you look on the front end of lot 5, there's a note that says 45-foot private servitude of passage. And that passage goes all the way up and down airline. But as far as the actual driveway, we don't, since the driveway's on airline, inside the airline right-of-way, we don't really show it.
Have you gone to DOTD to get the permit yet?
We do have the permit, the one driveway permit.
You have it approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chris, do you have a copy of it, any chance? The driveway permit?
No, sir, I do not.
Can you make sure you get it to them?
Absolutely.
All right.
What about lots 2 and 7, 8? Are they going to be entrances on the other internal roads?
Internal road entrance, yes, sir.
Okay. Can that all be noted in the plat? So the only one that'll be accessing will be the combination of 3, 4, 5?
Yeah, we can add that.
Generally speaking, where is this driveway? Where did they grant you the driveway, part of the middle?
The driveway splits lot 3 and 4 directly. I mean, the center of the driveway is the property line between 3 and 4, if you will.
I'm just noticing this. On Highway 42, the signal that it is there, is that going to be redone to add a signal for your access into the development?
Yes.
Has it been done? Do you know when?
It has not been done.
Has it been?
It has been permitted.
Okay.
Where, there are some other modifications to the airline improvements that were required due to developments on the east side that are not part of ours. So DOTD is having us hold off on that construction until those developments are ironed out.
All right, once again, just convey all this to staff, please. Not that I distrust you, I just like, keep them in the loop on all this, please. Any other comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I have a motion to approve based on, with the addition of limiting entrances to airline to the one mentioned at 3 and 4 there. In between 3 and 4, which would go to 3, 4, and 5. And any other punch list items? Final inspection.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas, to approve with conditions. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public meeting for granting approval for simple division of J.L. DuPlessis property, lots A1, A2.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates requesting this division of property for Daniel DuPlessis so that he can give the lot to his aunt. There weren't any comments from staff or the review agency, and we're asking for your approval.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Who's providing the bridge between the separation?
The bridge is already there.
Okay, who's providing it? It's there.
It's existing.
Privately owned?
Yes.
Okay. North end of the property, you showed two 10-foot servitudes. What kind of servitudes are those? What is that?
Drainage. It doesn't exist in ditch there, so.
So it's a total of 20? Because you don't show it connecting.
No, there's some in the middle.
Well, it should be 10 feet off the top bank.
Is it 10 foot from the bank or from Beach Bank?
Total width, do you know it?
Total width is 30 feet because the ditch is 10. Total width is thirty feet because the ditch is ten.
Staff, shouldn't that be shown as a thirty-foot drainage servitude? Shouldn't that be shown on the plat, on this subdivision, as a thirty-foot drainage servitude?
But the ditch may be watered, it's the width of the ditch, unless you know the width of the ditch is ten feet from the bank on each side.
I can just say about ten, top bank.
Okay, not just servitude, right. Any other questions, comments? Like to open up the floor for public hearing, anyone wishing to discuss this property, please come forward. No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions by commissioners and staff?
One last comment, do you have a mobile home and a residence, two homes on the property?
Yes.
Is it a family member back there, Ellen?
Yes.
And lot A2 is gonna be a family member also?
Yes.
And they're gonna get a concrete truck across that bridge? It's a little bitty bridge. I'll make a motion to approve, I think it meets the requirements, and I don't believe they're gonna be able to divide it any further.
I'd like to, if I may, just ask the author of the motion to.
Hang on, Barry already did second, so.
Okay.
This guy?
Yeah, any discussion?
When the discussion, I'd like for you all to consider adding condition that the drainage servitude, that that servitude be designated as a drainage servitude and show the overall width.
And also, I would like to ask, is the attorney for the drainage board that there be a note on the plat that the drainage board is not responsible to provide a bridge to lot A2? Because it's the only act, it's the only way you can get through it, is crossing a bridge.
Got it all?
One last request, I think along the lines of the bridge, the bridge is privately owned and maintained.
Okay, I wasn't keeping notes.
Can we try it again?
We have a, make it a drainage servitude, and then that the, the bridge is not the responsibility of the drainage board, and it's a privately owned bridge, basically right. It's the gist of it. Is that okay, Sherri, you agree with all that?
Yeah, I totally agree.
Okay. All right. Have a motion by Sherri Slime, and second by Barry Vare, with conditions as stated. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Thornton Harbison Roads Real Estate Property Tracks A3, A1 through A3, A4.
Evening.
Yes.
My name's Scott Ritter, I am an architect with Ritter Mayor Architects and representing the development group that's putting together this project. It's a, a mixed-use development, began as, I guess, a residential, mostly residential piece. Frontage on Airline Highway with various lots going back to Old Jefferson. We've, in an effort to put this product into, this project into commerce, have submitted to the commission a resubdivision plan that, I don't know if you guys have a copy of it, but resubdivision plan is shown here, that ultimately ends up with tract A3, A4 without frontage on airline or Old Jefferson. We are proposing, in lieu of frontage variance, to have two private servitude of accesses in place to grant the ultimate access to this lot via these two servitudes. This is again in an effort to maintain the feasibility of the project along airline without pulling any of these lots. If we had to provide the sixty-foot right of way all the way through to Airline Highway, we would end up ultimately losing commerce on one of these three lots. A point of information would be that initially this, this tract began as a landlocked lot, was a family-owned lot, and they had a servitude of access that went through from Old Jefferson, and we're just, which were kind of realigning things. So we're providing two entrance points to this lot, one from Old Jefferson, one from, from airline to, to help this lot exist as, as not having frontage. The second variance I think we're asking for is an elimination of these rear setbacks because it is a contiguous mixed-used lot or project. So these varies belong here, and here, setbacks here, sort of servitudes to have them revoked.
Are you talking about setbacks or the drainage servitudes?
The servitudes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Comments, questions from commissioners?
If you're curious, the, the plan for the development is kind of shown over here, so you can see how we end up with, coming up with, with the methodology that we came up with to get to this point. With three uses along airline and then access to the rear property. It's all, there'll be cross-access agreements in place, in fact, this, we have a lease already with this, this land, this user here. Everything will have cross-access, across the shared parking, so it's really kind of one development. We just need to subdivide it into lots to make the financing work out, so.
Are all three of those driveways permitted by DOTD already?
Coincidentally, the project that we were just talking about, two, two projects ago, this is the, this drive is existing, this drive is proposed. The median cut that is currently here, DOTD is requesting us to move it south to here. And that's what's currently being reviewed by DOTD. We've got a preliminary okay from Ronnie Carter, but he's actually going through the motions of finalizing the, it was his suggestion to make this maneuver, so that's why we're working with, with the Commerce Group across the street.
What about the other one?
This one is, is proposed, it's, it's proposed, it's not necessarily set in stone.
And then what about seventy-three on the other side, is that?
Up top here?
Yes, right.
This is a, a lot that was sold to another group with this servitude in place, recorded.
Okay, is there a driveway there now on seventy-three?
There's not one now, there will be one before we put all this stuff in.
Kind of still have to go through Ronnie to get, get that too, that's State Highway Two.
That's correct.
Correct. My name's Collier Thornton with Thornton Harbison Roads. The congestion at this intersection, as you guys can imagine, over the years, has continued to increase. And so part of the attractiveness of this particular development was that we had access, we actually have cross-access with CVS, so this particular parcel has access to Old Jefferson, to Airline Highway with the, with the D cell lane, plus cross-access with CVS. And so we feel like that these servitudes and, you know, and getting some of this traffic away from this intersection here is an advantage. And when we talked to Ronnie Carter about this, he was, he was in favor, you know, the, the turn lane that's here now is not, doesn't have a large enough stack to accommodate both the CVS traffic and ours, so he's requiring us to extend it.
Hold it up here, I can't, there you go.
So he's requiring us to redo the engineering where it's gonna enter our property a little bit further south. And so we're gonna, this, like Scott said, is proposed, this is gonna be the main entry point. I do want to also make note that this, this hatch, this red hatch piece here is, on our request, is a fifty-foot servitude, in talking to Mr. Becknell. In order to, to make this lot have frontage, you know, the frontage on airline would have to be sixty feet, the fifty-foot servitude is already encroaching in on the, the existing building we have, so. But, but going back to it, we have talked to Mr. Carter about this.
Well, I'd like to say, and just make sure you address everything at once with him.
Correct, no.
Don't, don't.
We've met with him on a couple of different occasions, and we actually met with him before we made this supplemental to make sure that he was on board for.
Okay.
I thought he told us last month that he was gonna require this development to go through the, the lot at CVS, or use that entrance and exit at the CVS.
Cross, cross-access through, to provide cross-access.
Okay.
The original purchaser of this, this used to be one lot, it used to be the Struck doll building, the developer who bought this then turned around and sold it to CVS, this has been two years ago. And at that closing, there is a cross-access agreement between the CVS lot and this piece of property here. And so there is a cross-access where this, this particular development has access to CVS. But the stack lane, the turn lane that's in place that CVS actually engineered and put in is not sufficient enough to accommodate the traffic for this particular development. So DOTD made their suggestion based on being able to get some of the traffic back to Old Jefferson, and so the engineering that they're requesting, the plan that they're requesting is based on us being able to get some of this traffic out to some of these other arteries.
Are you proposing, are you proposing to keep all three of those driveways?
Well, this one is out of our, that one is, was installed and put in by CVS. And so that's up, that's, that's not up to us. I think probably when it's all said and done, you know, that's up to, to DOTD. But this particular development, this is gonna be the only access for southbound traffic coming in here. If this is granted, and we've talked to Ronnie about this, this would be right in and right out only. But the, but the, our access point to the, you know, to the development, our main access point is gonna be right at this particular point there.
What we're trying to do is consolidate driveways rather than, you know, have as many as lots. We ended up with frontage for, where the middle tract, you got the drive for it, you have to have a drive for the center tract, a drive for the end tract, and we'd be sharing the drive on the, on the CVS track. It's just, we're gonna be driveway to death along Airline Highway, so this is sort of a, we're trying to consolidate all the traffic into one, one location at the median cut.
I appreciate that, and I withstand the fact that that's DOTD's road, and they're gonna have the ultimate say. You know, I gotta be honest with you, I still see one driveway too many, you know, I.
Well, this, you know, again, this is out of our.
Right, yeah.
I, I think probably based on the stacking here, and again, that's not up to us to close somebody else's driveway. I think by, you know, Mr. Carter requiring us to put this other driveway here. So, I mean, all that we can control is this one. I think based on this particular, you know, lot down here, that, that we may need a right-in, right-out only. But all, all that we can, you know, control is the one lot there.
There's really two that are on our property.
Staff?
I just wanted to comment, I don't think you're seeing the picture of the median and the median openings. If you were, from what they're describing, only one of these driveways lines up with a median opening. Therefore, you only have one left turn into this facility. And all the other driveways, even though it may look like there's too many, they're simply right-in, right-outs. And that's why DOTD doesn't have an issue. They don't mind right-in, right-out driveways, they're trying to control the left turns off of Airline Highway.
Another thing, currently, the, the turn lanes, this turn lane is not offsetting, so what actually Ronnie wanted us to do is, we're being required to re-engineer this, so the southbound lane and the lane, the, the turn lane coming into the property with the gentleman across the street, we're actually offsetting. So from a traffic standpoint and a safety standpoint, it's gonna be a, you know, it's gonna be better.
Are there left turn lanes presently on, in?
There's a south.
Nothing on north.
Yeah, there's currently, CVS, you know, DOTD, and, and as Ronnie was telling us, they can only make rulings based on, as it's submitted. So CVS came first, and they require them, as you go through the forty-two intersection headed south, you immediately get in a turn lane. And then the development across the street came, and so he made some requirements for them, and then this development came in the picture after the fact. So currently, there is a left turn lane that enters right here. Basically, we're gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be curved up, and then requiring us to scoot it down so you have an extra four or five cars that can stack in this turn lane. So you're not gonna have a left turn lane here and a left turn lane here.
So, so they are eliminating that median opening?
Correct, we're gonna basically.
Okay.
So this will become a right-in, right, and I can see that you would think that was confusing, but.
Okay.
So the only left turn lane, the southbound turn lane, is, is gonna be moved from this location.
Can you see this, Michael? Are you on here? That left turn lane, right, that you just drew, who's building that?
This one, it's actually because of us coming in after the fact, there's gonna be a shared intersection between this development and our development.
Okay, so you are committed to?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Is this driveway lining up with the Commerce Center on the other side?
That's correct.
And in doing so, they're making us offset.
Right.
You know, due to the volume of traffic that this is gonna create in, in here, before, they weren't offsetting. So by us entering the picture, it's actually been scooted down a little bit, and we're re-engineering it for them to be offset.
Any other comments? This time I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing, anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to speak, public hearing is closed. Yes.
Staff comments?
Oh.
Okay. That's baseball, we said, okay. Anyone else on the commission comments, staff comments? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with variance. Subject to the developer meeting all the requirements that DOTD has on the driveway. I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve with conditions based on meeting all the requirements of DOTD and staff by Julio Dumas, second by Don.
I'll object.
Okay, we have one objection, Mike Marshawn. Any other objections? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing to consider amending Planning Commission policy concerning subdivisions and wastewater permits. Mr. O'Neil, you want to discuss, please?
Yeah, this involves, DOTD is, is asking that municipalities and parishes revise their procedures so that the permits are required, are granted before they come to you for their preliminary plat. And that's all we're asking to do is revise, it's just a change in a policy where the ERA is gonna require that they get those permits prior to them coming here with the preliminary plat. I think what they do now is they get, they get the permit after the fact. And so they're asking us to change our policy and make sure they have it before.
We need to go to public hearing for that, correct?
Yeah, we need to open a public hearing.
Oh, O'Neil, that, what we're require, what we would like to require is, it's a preliminary determination, it's not the actual permit.
Oh, okay.
The preliminary determination is a one-page form that generally takes about two weeks for the developer to get back. You can use conceptual information to get it done at that point. So that, that's all we would like to ask for upfront.
I make a motion to put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Chris, you have DHH, or O'Neil does, you got, must have approval of DHH and the engineering review agent. I'm trying to see how this gets to DQ. I mean, how, is there a interaction between DHH and DQ?
There is. Typically, in a subdivision, the treatment plant is, if not the last thing, one of the last things to get approval from the government entities.
last things to get approval from the government entities. The problem with that is that you may have a lot of infrastructure put in the ground before you have an okay from DQ. And DHH, I guess, is tied in with DQ somehow. But if DQ has a problem with the stream that's receiving the sewer effluent, all of this work has already been done. And DQ's recognized that this problem and they're asking for the local communities to require developers to give them a heads up that we're proposing this development, this is the discharge that we think we're going to put out, and this is the point that the effluent's going to come into the stream. If DQ recognizes there's a problem with that stream, they can tell the developer at that point that there may be a problem rather than waiting to the very end of the process.
Okay.
So then is this, Chris, is this for subdivisions or subdivisions? I mean, are we talking a subdivision of developed subdivision or subdivision of property?
What I recommended to the parish president was subdivisions of eight lots or more, similar to what triggers the treatment plant for our simple resubs.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You had a motion, Julio, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
To have a public hearing? Is that what I... Have a second? Motion by Julio, second by Beverly. Any opposition? Okay, we'll be on the agenda next, next month. Committee reports. Subdivision ordinance committee?
We did not meet in April due to the holiday. Our next meeting will be the 28th of this month, I believe that's the last Monday, it's the 28th at 1 o'clock at DPW.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait. Okay, I could have the day wrong, it's the last Monday of the month.
That is Monday, that's Monday.
All right. Strategic planning, is there a strategic planning committee? Do we know? No, I guess we don't know. New business, consideration to hold a public hearing for adoption as policy to the TND final plat submittal checklist. You have in your packets, I believe, the checklist for TND. Can look over it, if you want to have a public hearing. Any comments, discussion, questions?
Would the final plat submittal checklist for a TND plat be any different than any other final plat submittal? How, how so? It's a plat, isn't it? Ultimately, those lots have to end up in a plat, much like any other subdivision plat, correct? So are we, are we still talking about a plat? That's going to be recording the public records, it's going to designate the lots that are going to be sold and so forth?
Yes.
So you would need, you would need all of the same information, would you not?
But for starters, enough for, I'm pretty sure the ordinance requires the landscape architects sign it also.
Well, I, I just say you need additional information, that, but that basic, you need that.
Of, of course.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion or what is the wish of the commission?
Move to hold a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Michael Marshon, second by Sherri Slyman. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Full business, Carl Stafford Estates, lots KC1 through KC4.
Good evening, I'm Donnie Floyd representing Mr. and Mrs. Carl Cox in this matter. Some understanding that this was before the commission, before. Do all of you have a copy of my letter from February 20, 2008, that I sent to the Board of Adjustments?
Yes.
Yes.
Should I go through it again or do y'all have any questions or comments since we're asking for a variance on the servitude and on the servitude of passage?
Commissioners, any requests or any questions? If y'all want to, if they can review it?
We denied this, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry? Deferred.
I thought if something was deferred, we had to act on it within 30 days.
The mover requested deferred.
Okay. What, the text here says on December 12th, the planning commission deferred. Under staff comments?
Mm-hmm.
In my recollection, was that the request of the, the mover requested, at that time we asked him if he would defer it, otherwise it couldn't be denied.
Right.
And he requested that he defer it.
Okay. Well, it's been a good while since we had, can you tell us what's different now than what was proposed before?
I wasn't here before.
It's kind of hard for you to tell us then.
I can't say anything's different. Mr. Bennet, hopefully can.
What we're proposing on the new map is being that Mr. Cox previously, you know, has a slab on his piece of property to build a home. And the servitudes that y'all require, the 50-foot and the 12-foot on top of that, to cross over his slab that he's already got permits for. And we're asking for a waiver or a variance to go around his slab. Because he says he's already cut his permits, his sewer down and everything.
There's electrical, water, and sewer to this slab. It was all put in before any of this ever came up.
Let me ask you something, the slab is for a home, correct?
That's correct.
Right. When you applied for the building permit for that slab, you know, this was all one lot.
That's correct.
Okay? So you had the appropriate access, you had the appropriate setbacks, you met all of those requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. and Mrs. Cox had permits to do what they wanted to do at that time.
Right. And, and under those, and that permit was granted on one property, one parcel of land?
Yes.
Meeting all appropriate requirements?
Yes.
So what's the hardship? I don't see anything except for the letter from the legal counsel, is there, can you explain what the hardship is on this?
The hardship is why we're requesting the variance?
Well, the hardship is, is for the Coxes to do a family partition, because they don't have a, a public street to do a family partition.
If they don't have adequate service, they can do a family partition.
Correct.
Well, what's not sufficient to do a family partition?
We asked for a waiver of that because we see...
You can't do that, if they shall, it has to be at least 20 feet.
O'Neal, you're referring to the one, the 12-foot at the beginning, correct?
Right, the first one.
Right.
With the tree.
With the trees in it.
And although the permits were granted, they were granted for a single lot, not for multiple lots. The different permits only apply, to build a house, build a single lot.
You decided to resubdivide this after you got all your permits?
That's correct. What happened is that they got the permits, put slabs down, built the shed, put all the plumbing, electrical, and water, ordered their mobile home and then paid down a fair amount of money and the manufacturer went out of business. They're presently in litigation over that money and they've been holding, and then decided last year to do the family partition and they've had on hold the ordering of a new home until it's determined what can be done here. And the reason for the partition is that they don't want to mortgage at this point all of their land in order to buy a home. They would prefer just to mortgage a small portion.
But the quandary, quandary number one is, is that, you know, we have a 12-foot private servitude. Okay? And it has to be a minimum criteria in order for you to subdivide that property. And unless you get that wider to meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance, we have no way of granting this family partition. We don't have, we can't grant the waiver.
We have a lot of tree that's right there, it's got a 48 greatest brand.
I love the tree, I hate to see something happen to it.
Well, it's not his tree anyway.
It's not your tree.
Right.
But there's nothing I can do, but that the ordinance is specific, I don't, we don't have the legal ability to grant that unless you have the appropriate means of ingress and egress that the code requires.
So the code requires 20-foot servitude of passage across someone else's property in order to do a family partition?
Not for four, isn't it four lots, 40 feet, Charles? Four lots is 40 feet.
Yeah. Across someone else's property.
If you want four lots.
You have a 40-foot servitude, it doesn't say it has to be across somebody else's land, but that's what you have to have in order for it to access.
And that's 40 lots all the way down through the slab? That's not just across the other gentleman's property?
I honestly didn't know we, that would be an issue across the other gentleman's property. We were asking for the variance on the, on the, to a 30-foot servitude of passage across the back and then reducing it down to, to 20 feet at their home. And I was not advised that that, that issue came up before as to the, the 20 or 40 feet, whatever it is, across the, the front property.
I thought, I thought back in December, we talked about that because of the oak tree and everything else and we...
You weren't here.
I know you weren't here, but I mean, I know we went over that.
We did and the property, that property owner was present for the meeting.
Yeah, he was here.
He addressed the commission.
And he wasn't giving any more property, because it was oak.
Right, because it was a tree.
I mean, I know he wants to preserve his tree and that's an issue you have, you know, that's outside the realm of this commission, but the code's specific and we, we, we don't have the wherewithal to circumvent or, or grant a waiver for that provision of the code.
Defer it. Can we defer it, see if they'll give us a move?
I don't have an issue deferring it out, you know.
Can we defer it again, O'Neal? I mean, is there a...
If y'all request it, that's what we...
My request.
Okay.
You want to be specific on the time? Just be specific.
No, he can request that he just be defer it till they resolve these issues.
Okay. So move.
Made by the mover.
Specify it.
At the request of the, of the applicant, I'll move for a deferral.
Second. Do we have to vote on it? I guess we can grant it, okay. Motion by Julio Dumas to, at the request of the developer to defer this, second by Michael Marshon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Full business, CSRS contract extension. Everybody remembers back in February, we extended CSRS contract for 90 days with the understanding after the 60-day time period, we would reevaluate and listen to staff and CSRS and see how, how we could proceed forward. At this time, I guess I'd, let me ask staff first and then I'll ask Michael to address anything that the staff may have comments on. Actually, we have 30 days to act on this and, like I say, by next meeting, we need to make a decision to, you know, move on in some direction based on CSRS contract. So, Charles, if you would, just if you got a, or Chris or somebody, if we can talk a little bit about how the workload is going, I guess, I know our workload is, is going down.
That's correct. And as the workload stands right now, I, I think we have the staff in place to, to handle the tempo. However, if the workload does come back up to the level we were at nine months ago or so, it, it's going to be very difficult for us to handle all that work without her and on, another civil engineer at least, probably. One thing that Charles and I discussed is possibly CSRS, if they'd like to stay on an hourly basis as a safety net until we can bring our staff up to a level that's, can handle the, the workload we've seen in the past.
Okay. I mean, it sounds fair to me and I guess I'll see if Michael has some, something he wants to add to it, discuss a little bit further. We, we do appreciate all that you've done, obviously. It's been a, a busy three years or whatever, it's three or four years, so...
Four years. I, I have no, no problem with the, you know, with the concept, I guess the, the one thing that I would ask, because our workload is pretty, as long as things don't pick up, it's going to diminish to literally nothing. I would like to be able to have the ability to do work on the development side in Ascension Parish. If, and I, what I'm asking is, is that if, if you want the contract to stay in place as a safety net, that's fine. But I would like the ability to do work for developers in the parish and so if that would occur, obviously that work could be reviewed by the existing staff.
Yeah, and that's something we'll, we'll have to review and see what kind of...
Understood.
You know, compromise or agreements can be, can be worked out. Like I say, we, we have 30 days to review this and then come back and, and make final decision and...
Let me say one issue that's hanging out there. We basically are... We basically are doing, have done all of our work, and our filing system is electronic. In other words, we don't have any hard paper files, they're all computer files. If the decision in 30 days is to terminate the contract, that's fine, but prior to that, we need to, because it's going to take some work for the computer gurus to figure out how to get all our files from our system into your system.
Sure.
And there's going to be expense on our part to do that. So frankly, we need to know.
Okay.
We need to know pretty quickly.
Okay.
Whether or not the contract would extend on an hourly basis in order to do that. So I think we went back, if I'm not mistaken, Sean, scanned all files, hard files from the initial day that we started receiving anything, and we have all that stored electronically.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
President Morton asked, could not be here tonight due to a prior engagement with, we're requesting additional 30 days on this issue with new zoning director coming in, planning zoning director, lack of people in the administration, we have not had time to have some lengthy discussions with Creshu and without a planning zoning director to discuss this matter, so we're requesting 30 days to meet with staff.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Paul, does that mean?
30 more days?
You know, originally, we extended it for 90 days, so you're asking us to.
No, just in 30 days, we would like to meet with you guys again, and have an update for you then.
Okay.
Okay, and I think, you know, before the 30 days have expired, we probably will hear from, you know, if you would, just.
In the administration.
You know, either call us or email us, and we can work with Michael to see which correction.
I'm going to suggest without, because I'm, I mean, my problem is, if we wait 30 days and the decision is, no, we're going to terminate your contract, no hard feelings to understand that. I'm not going to have the ability to get these computer files copied and in your system and be able to bill you for our time.
And I would agree.
And I understand how public contracts work, so that being the case, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and initiate those moves to transfer the computer files.
And I would think that it's probably something we would want to have, either way.
That's a good point, I mean.
Anyway, you know, I think it's a good thing to have a good database here, anyway.
Right, I agree. And so what I'm saying is, let's go ahead and get them transferred.
Okay, I agree.
That way, that's not in the decision.
Okay. I agree, is that, is that fair, Kim? Yeah?
I'm sorry, I'm making this.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I was thinking about some of what the parish president told us last month, too. They're wanting to hire a planner, parish planner, and then there has been talk for some time about hiring another engineer to help Chris, so I don't know where we stand with that, if there's going to be another engineer in-house. I'd kind of like to get some information on where we stand on those issues right now. Because that's going to be extra staff that we're going to have.
Well, and I would agree with that, and I can't, I don't think they've hired anybody that I know of.
No.
So, and I don't know where that hiring process is, if there's something in place. I mean, I think Chris has said that, for right now, he's.
Yeah.
Maintaining a good time turnaround and.
They've advertised a job, I don't know if they've had any applicants come, but we certainly haven't hired anybody yet.
So it is the intention, just here again, it's a timetable that we don't know is really.
Yes, sir.
Definite. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. Item C. Mr. Marshon, master plan update.
Last year, the commission directed the then acting director of planning to proceed, working up a letter requesting information from various firms, to start an interview process and so forth, to do a mini-master plan. What we wanted to do was a mini-master plan for the Darrow area, and then at some point later, we would may look at trying to do an overall, or another area, and then get to an overall parish master plan, Land use plan. And we haven't discussed that, and it's been, I don't know, close to six months, so I'm kind of curious where we are with that, since we've had, we no longer have the acting planning director, and of course, we have a new director of planning, and he's a, I can't, I can't put the monkey on his back at this point, so I guess, Charles, that's going to kind of go to you as far as what has transpired so far.
Can I answer that? To any of the decisions or answers?
So we don't even know if the letter was, he started the letter or anything? Okay.
You know, I just, I think out of, you know, out of courtesy to our new planning director, I mean, the first day we get to meet him and what have you, and I think that, you know, the message to him is just like, hey, we have this request, it's floating out there, could you please look into it, and could you get back to us at next meeting? I think that I wouldn't want to put Charles on it, that was something that the former, you know, planning director took on personally, that he was going to take action on that matter, and obviously, he's not around, so I would respectfully ask that, you know, if the new director would be so kind as to do some research into it and see if by any chance, any actions be taking place, or what action we should take, and maybe, you know, advise us at next meeting.
Well, I thought some of that was coming out of your subcommittee, too, with the zoning and planning out in Darrow.
Well, what we did in the zoning, is that we're looking at the whole area of the parish, and we'll talk about that, is, you know, and, you know, I didn't bring the maps to go over them with you all, because, you know, he's here, he's on board, and out of courtesy to him, I thought that the first thing I should do is, since Lance and I, you know, have been working with the subcommittee, that we at least should meet with him and get his buy before we go any further. Plus, in talking to Mr. Pankton about what is the actual process of that review, and what are the steps and what have you, I'm not quite clear what those steps are, so, you know, so yeah, there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle that are still loose, you know, that we're working, that affected that to some extent, and, you know, I think we ought to just give the new director a little time to get his hands around that. We haven't even showed him what Lance and the subcommittee have been working with, so we'd like to show him that, too.
Well, and my intent was, I was going to ask our new planning director.
Okay.
To take, you know, if he had the opportunity to look into it for us, but I said, we're close to six months on this, and we haven't heard anything, okay?
I didn't know what happened to that Darrow sub-study.
Even, well, I mean, at the time, I remember part of the conversation, and we were looking at, as I understood it, we were looking at actually sending this, a letter going out as far as January, because I think there was some concerns with some of the other commissioners about the amount of time, but we never heard anything one way or another.
Well, I love.
So it just keeps stretching out, and that's how things get.
Sure, and, yeah, and I think with the new administration, we need to.
Yeah.
Work with them and get their guidance and with the new staff.
And Michael, at the same time, I think Mr. Seigler also was questioning, you know, you know, was the money in the budget, or did he have to get permission to expend it or not spend it, and there was some question about that, and I don't think he ever got beyond that point.
Oh, no, the money was in the budget, and it got pulled out, it got put back in. There's $300,000 in the budget for this.
Okay. Well, like I said, all I recall is, is that Mr. Seigler got stuck in the budget part, and I never heard what happened to it after that.
That was resolved.
Well, I bet Ricky's happy to hear that, so.
Last year, that was actually resolved.
Okay, well, we'll keep it at forefront of discussions with the staff, all right? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Michael Marshon, second by Beverly Barre, any opposition? We are adjourned. We will convene a zoning in 15 minutes.